Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the town planning and zoning for May 25th, 2022. If everybody could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if Noreen, if you're there, if you could do the roll call, please.
I sure will. Chairman Payne?
Here.
Chairman Payne.
Here.
Commissioner Claffey.
Here.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hagerty.
Here.
Commissioner Havens.
Here.
Commissioner Lenaris.
Here.
Commissioner Trister.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Braverman.
Here.
Commissioner Drows. Commissioner Drows. Commissioner Gill.
Here.
All set.
Very good. Thank you, Noreen.
You're welcome.
Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I believe we're going to add an eight dash twenty-four. Where would you like to?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. So if you could add to the agenda the mandatory referral under general statute section eight dash twenty-four for the addition of the parking area at Patterson School.
Under new business?
Business, please.
All right, we'll do that. And we're at public participation now on the agenda. If there's anybody from the public within the Zoom application, if you'd like to speak, raise your hand. If you'd like to participate during public participation. If calling into Zoom meeting by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand to be recognized, use star six when recognized by speak, to speak by telephone. And if you would state your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it. Is there anybody on the?
Line, but nobody has a hand raised.
We'll give it a minute. Anybody wishing to speak on during public participation?
Hearing none.
Without any objection, we'll move to remarks by commissioners. Do any commissioners have any remarks? Okay, without objections, we're going to move to the first public hearing, which is petition nineteen dash twenty-two. If I could have the, our secretary, Commissioner Havens, read the procedures for a public hearing. Procedures for public hearings. The order of proceedings of public hearings shall be as follows. A, convening by the chairperson. B, reading of the notice by the commission secretary or a commissioner designated by the chairperson to act in their stead. C, presentation by applicant. D, town planner report on the application. E, persons wishing to speak in favor of the application, limited to three minutes per person. F, persons wishing to speak in opposition to the application, limited to three minutes per person. G, rebuttal by the applicant, limited to five minutes total. During a public hearing, it shall be within the discretion of the chairperson whether the time limitations should be varied slightly, provided the commission consents to any such variance by majority vote. Very good. Thank you very much. And like I said, our first public hearing is petition nineteen dash twenty-two. Zoning Regulation Amendment, Section 6.13 and Section 9.1 pertaining to accessory apartments and to opt out of accessory apartment provisions of PA 2129 slash SB 6107. Applicant Newington Town Planning and Zoning, contact Renata Bertol. So this was a Public Act 2129. It passed in July. It states that the zoning must allow one accessory dwelling unit, one accessory apartment alongside or within a single-family house without the need for a public hearing or special permit. Newington may opt out of this requirement through a two-step process requiring action by the Town Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Council. Newington already allows accessory apartments in an R-20 and an R-12 zone. However, the way our regulations treat this use, it's not consistent with the provisions of the above-mentioned Public Act. So I'm going to turn it over to Renata for a short, brief report, and then we'll go to the public.
So I presented in detail about this at the last public hearing, and I will just summarize at tonight's meeting. Essentially, the regulation by the state is that if we don't do anything at this point, we would be required to, zoning officer would be required to allow by zoning signature, a unit, whether it's attached or detached, at any lot that allows addition by setbacks. So the unit would still need to meet building codes, you know, fire separation distances, and zoning setback requirements, but not necessarily some other zoning requirements that we have in our accessory apartment regulation. We currently have an accessory apartment regulation that requires a special permit. It only allows for attached unit, we allow accessory apartments in R-12 and R-20 zones. I have prepared a regulation amendment, which I have also presented to you at the last meeting. Eric, would you allow me to share the screen, please? And I'll briefly just go over some of the things that I included in it. So this provision that I, this draft that I prepared essentially says that we could consider allowing one attached accessory apartment as an as-of-right unit. That is something that's in compliance with this Public Act, with the state statute right now. We could also consider a detached accessory apartment on lots that are, for example, 40,000 square feet. We could allow detached accessory apartments on lots that are less than that size by special permit. And I said this, this is a bit extreme. This is probably a bit more than what, I don't know that for sure, actually. That's why we have public hearing. But I have a sense that this might be in excess of what the community is prepared to accept. I did this because I also, in conjunction with this regulation amendment, included a map, which I will show to you shortly, that kind of shows areas in town with certain lot sizes that then show what we can and cannot consider going forward. And then I included some other regulations. But essentially, what I would like the conversation tonight to be is, you had some time to look at the proposed regulation amendment. I would like you to give me a feedback, feedback on that amendment. I would like to understand whether or not the public and the commission feels that we feel it's appropriate to allow attached and detached accessory apartments in R-12 and R-20 zone without requiring special permit, period. If we are okay to allow that, then we do not need to opt out. Then we need to revise our zoning regulation differently than what I did and get in line with essentially what state statute is doing. If we do not feel that that's appropriate for town like Newington, then we need to opt out. And then we need to take some time and look at our accessory apartment regulations. And we have some time. Once we opt out, then we have time to actually look at our regulations and, you know, nitpick on like little things in it and refine it as we desire and modify that the way we feel is appropriate. So the next thing, I will not go, because I did that last time, I will not go through each section of the zoning regulation, but I will show this map that I'm talking about because I think that's a relevant thing and a good decision-making matter. Let me just share that screen next. So if you look at these maps, so all of this, all of this that's lit in light green are lots, all these lots are larger than, this is going to get messy now, I got a little bit. So light green highlighted sections are the lots that are larger than 20,000 square feet. And then there are areas that are subtracted, you know, these are areas of floodplain and wetlands. So if you look at these lots, you know, you end up in some sections where, like here, you know, because you could have neighborhoods that are pretty populated. These are lots that are 40,000 square feet, the purple one. So the purple lots, 40,000 square feet lot is almost an acre. Some of those are schools, some of those are parks, some of those are just residential lots that are large. Those could be appropriate for consideration of additional structure, even if it's a detached structure. So going forward, I think we could think of situations where perhaps, and this would be probably my recommendation to do, we should consider attached units either an as-of-right or as-of-right after like 20,000 square feet on a lot. Like those should be allowed. We have had a regulation that requires special permits, and we had had only a few of those approved. Since I've been here, there was not a single application for those. So I think we should allow those as-of-right, at least on lots that are larger than maybe 20,000 square feet. I think we should perhaps consider allowing detached units on lots that are larger than 40,000 square feet, and those could be perhaps allowed by special permit. So those are some things to maybe think about and mewl over going forward. If we're thinking about asking for special permit for anything, then an opt-out is mandatory thing. So that's, I guess that's what I'm recommending.
Very good. Any questions from the commissioners? For Renata? Go ahead, Renata. On a larger lot, 40,000 and bigger, could it be more than one unit? If it's zoning regulations allowed for, you know, if all the setbacks were there? Or does it limit it to one?
So my, my draft is one. We could consider more than one by special permit again, you know, that's up to the commission. But my proposal was for one.
Does the state define it to?
If we opt out, state has nothing to do with us anymore. If we opt out, we create our regulations the way we want.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak concerning this petition nineteen dash twenty-two? Anybody in favor of it?
No one online.
Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, outside, I just woke in. We are on the.
We're on, we're on the opt-out. And if you'd like to come up, Mike, please come up.
Mr. Chairman, Michael J. Fox, 1901 Main Street. I have been following this opt-out since I was a commissioner, and I've had mixed emotions through the whole thing. The, this is. Our accessory apartment regulations right now has, has become obsolete because of this, because of this, this Public Act. And it seems to me that although we do want to see housing, we do want to see affordable housing rather than, you know, 20-acre lots, I, you know, I see this as a loss of, of local responsibility, for one thing. Another commissioner, you know, talking back and forth, there are so many things that can go wrong with this. You know, like if we were to stay in and let's say I wanted my kids to sell their house and move in, I could put, I could put an apartment in the middle of my, of my two-thirds acre property. And the commission couldn't, couldn't do anything about it. As far as, you know, if we were opt-out, we'd still have to, if I'm not mistaken, Madam Planner, we would still have to, as I saw on the agenda, redo our regulations as far as accessory apartments are concerned. So, but at least this way, you know, we wouldn't see little thousand-square-foot apartments popping up somewhere. I mean, we went so far a while ago to, to change our amendments to allow businesses on the, on the first floor of a multi, multi-story home in a residential district. And while that's, well, you know, so far, you know, I really didn't like that. I thought I'd see, I thought we'd be opening up a can of worms, but that seemed, that seemed to be pretty, seemed to settle down. The only one, the only application we've had for that was that one person that had, that asked for it. But I, I don't see anything good coming out of, you know, going along with this, with this Public Act. I'd rather see, I'd rather have you people take a look at, at some changes that our planner would make. And I've, so far, and a couple of issues around, I've never really had much problem with what she does, and I think neither have you people. So I'm, I'm for opting out. And once, and you know, once the regulation, the amendment, text amendments come up before you, I'll probably have an opinion on that, too. Thank you.
So, yeah, once this commission decides to opt out, it'll go to the town council, and then they'll hold a public hearing. And, and then they'll have to make a decision. As far as the regulations, this commission could, could, once we opt out, we could leave the regulations the way it is. We could look at it and make minor modifications, or we could make major modifications to it.
Mr. Chair, I did receive correspondence.
And I do have someone on the line now.
All right, so take the person.
Phone number ending in zero seven zero. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. I'm listening to this tonight and in the past. I have not changed my opinion. I do not think we should do this. I think we should opt out of it. One thing that came to mind is that I live in the north end of town, and they're pretty small lots here. And people do have sheds. I have a shed, and actually I have two. And if someone were to build a accessory apartment next to me, it would probably be right on top of me. I don't know what the restrictions are, but I'm finding even during the winter, people are burning wood. And someone who has problems with the smoke and stuff, I have a very terrible time trying to breathe when the smoke is coming in my window. I'm just thinking now, not only would they be able to burn wood in their own homes, they could burn wood as heat source in the backyard. I just think we're too small of an area to be having little pop-up accessory dwelling units. So my vote would be to opt out, even though I don't get a vote. My opinion would be to opt out and come up with our own regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Anybody else from the public, either here or Gail? Go right ahead.
Twenty-one Isabel Terrace. Yeah, I think the main reason I'm in favor of opting out is it's difficult for me to envision with 169 towns in our state, each one is very different in terms of density, in terms of population, in terms of rural versus urban, whatever. I find it hard to comprehend how one state regulation can really be appropriate for each community. So as much as, you know, I do support accessory dwelling units, but I think it's important to, to tailor the construction and then the regulation of them to the community itself. So that's my reason for thinking we should opt out, because one-size-fits-all does not fit 169 towns in our state. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak, either in favor or against this petition? We have somebody online.
I think she has a correspondence.
All right, so I'll just reiterate this in record. Hello, my name is Sukiana Assar, and I'm currently an architecture student at Pratt Institute. I grew up in Newington for most of my life. I attended elementary through high school in Newington, so it is where I got most of my early education as well. I also worked at the local library for a few years, so I have a deep connection to Newington. Currently, I have been working with the segregate Connecticut this past year as a creative contributor, simultaneously learning about sustainable land use policies and how they impact affordable housing, the environment, and community. I've gotten to learn more about the need for accessory dwelling units, the utilization of minimum lot sizes in Connecticut, and the benefits of transit-oriented communities. Overall, I think Newington could benefit greatly from better utilizing accessory dwelling units. They make use of existing housing infrastructure and have lower costs. This is especially useful for younger people, which aids in finding affordable, this, let me just go back for a second. This is especially useful for younger people, which aids in finding affordable housing. It would allow more young people to move in and stay in town, which seems hard for people like me otherwise. It is also an efficient and environmentally conscious way of looking at housing. It would especially benefit younger people, such as students, who do have to consider costs when coming out of school, most likely also dealing with student loans. ADUs would be a sustainable, affordable housing option, especially for younger population. I have seen other towns embrace them, and it seems like they're setting themselves up to attract younger people in a bigger way. I would like to see my town show that kind of interest in people like me.
Anybody else on Zoom willing to, wanting to speak?
No. Time.
Hearing none. I'll go to the commissioners. Would you like to close this petition twenty-two, nineteen dash twenty-two and move old business for discussion? Or would you like to leave it open? Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for petition nineteen dash twenty-two, if you want to close it.
I'm moving to close petition nineteen dash twenty-two and move it to old business for possible actions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Woods. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded, seconded by Commissioner Havens. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So we would do the opt-out after we do this?
This is the opt-out. We would discuss the opt-out after this vote. This is just a vote to close it, and then we would have a discussion about whether or not we want to send it to the council for an opt-out.
Okay, but are there any changes to the regs?
Right now, they're, we, she showed us some regulation changes that would be possible, but we're not, that's not on the agenda right now. We would take that, we would take the, the changes for the amendment or for that regulation up at a later date after the council decides to either opt out or not opt out.
You can give me comments on the regulation amendment either now or after the close of the public hearing as a comment on the, on the regulation amendment. There will be plenty of opportunity for that, either or. The only people that will not be able to give me public comments on the regulation amendment will be public. Even after we close the public hearings, no matter what happens, we will reopen another public hearing on the text amendment, because no matter what happens with this, I will hold another hearing on the regulation amendment. This is a big regulation amendment. It impacts like a huge area in town. So I will, like, I can't have this as something that is just, you know, done kind of without people really having enough access to it.
Done. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously to close petition nineteen dash twenty-two and move it to old business for discussion. Our next petition is petition twenty-three dash twenty-two, and I'll ask Commissioner Lenars if you could read that for us. I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Petition twenty-three dash twenty-two, special permit, Section 6.16, to allow a hybrid retail location for adult-use cannabis sales at 2903 Berland Turnpike, applicant Verano CT Pharma, Newington LLC, as subsidiary owner GLM 1867 Realty LLC, Newington Realty, Inc., contact range table continued from May 11, 2022.
Is the applicant available here? Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Adam Planner, for the record, Reno Ferry C. Verano, Rocky Hill, Connecticut. So we're here in follow-up to the last meeting. There was a matter of the butter notices hadn't been sent out. So we carried the meeting to this week. We do have our traffic planner here to address any, any concerns or comments. I also have additional supporting information on the site and the use.
So. If you'd like to present any new information, or if the traffic expert has any new information he'd like to present, that's, that's perfect.
Yes, there are a couple of points that we'd like to address, starting first and foremost with the traffic, which seemed to be the overwhelming concern on the, the folks who called in. So Kermit here has prepared some comments to that.
Thank you, Mark. For the record, Mr. Chairman, my name is Kermit KWH Enterprise LLC, Marydon, Connecticut. What I'm going to do is, since the last hearing, you know, I will address two public comments. I noticed that, you know, they are seeking answers from the applicant about traffic. And also, and also there's a. answers, uh, from the applicant about traffic and also, and also there's a, uh, one comment I remember from, uh, the commission is, uh, regarding the comparison of the, the trips we are gonna generate compared with the previous restaurant use. So if, if I may, you know, just, uh, first address the commissioner's comment about the trips. Um, I discussed last, uh, last time, you know, we are looking at for the three peak hours, weekday morning, weekday afternoon and Saturday peak hour, we are looking at fifty-one and one thirty-eight. Uh, again, that's more than the previous, uh, restaurant. But since the topic of comparison was raised, I think it, it will be, uh, helpful to look at, uh, the, you know, the development before the previous restaurant. What I'm, what I'm talking about is Krispy Kremes. Uh, that was obviously about 20 years ago. I looked at the assessors map. That was, uh, the building, uh, for the Krispy Kreme. It's now the urgent care, uh, facility was built in two thousand and two, exactly 20 years ago. And the site was obviously designed specifically for Krispy Kremes. So it is, uh, instructed to compare our trips with the Krispy Kreme trips to look at, you know, because, you know, although they are located in two separate buildings, but both our development within this site, you know, including the urgent care and the car place and, and also the Krispy Kreme, you know, when, when they came in 20 years ago, they are the most, uh, traffic-intensive buildings, uh, on the site, right? So if you compare our number fifty-one ninety-one, one thirty-eight, uh, with Krispy Kremes, uh, I estimated the Krispy Kreme traffic based on most recent version of the, uh, of the trip generation menu, uh, on the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is a, a, a technical standard, you know, used in traffic study, uh, and also based on the square footage of the building, which is currently, again, occupied by the urgent care. Their morning peak hour trip is three hundred eighty. Their afternoon trip is one thirty-two. Their Saturday trip is two thirty-one. Now, if you compare those three numbers, uh, with our fifty-one ninety-one and one thirty-eight, our numbers are really only a fraction of theirs. Our, our morning, uh, trips will be thirteen percent of the Krispy Kreme trips. Uh, for the afternoon, our number is sixty-nine percent of the Krispy Kreme trips. Our Saturday number is about sixty percent of the Krispy Kreme trips. The argument I'm making here is really the site was designed for a more traffic-intensive use 20 years ago. And we are occupying the site with two other, you know, uh, tenants. Uh, even add all our three, add all the trips from these three buildings, we will still generate fewer trips than Krispy Kreme when this site was built, uh, at that 20 years ago. So that's the first point I want to make addressing the commission's comment. Uh, the other two comments I heard during the public hearing, during the public comments, uh, portion of the public here, last public hearing as well, is, uh, uh, the commenters mentioned that she did not, uh, she said we did not look at other dispensaries. Actually, that's incorrect. Uh, the basis of a trip generation is the IT survey of other dispensaries in the country. Uh, specifically on page A three dot two A five in the appendices of the report, I included the IT, uh, pages for the dispensaries, uh, you know, dispensary data for the three peak hours. The second, uh, comment from the public hearing is, uh, she said we did not show turning volumes, uh, for our driveways. That's also incorrect. Uh, I refer to page A nine to page A seventeen of the report. Again, in the appendices, you know, these are the volume figures for the traffic study that include all the existing and future, uh, turning volumes at our side driveways. So that's all I have, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, unless the commission has any additional questions.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I had one on the parking.
Yes.
It's also shared parking with the Firestone that's there. Yes or no? No?
No.
It's a separate owner. Even though they ingress and egress out of a easement?
They don't, they don't start parking. They could speak to it, but I don't believe they do.
No, there's, there's designated parking. I, do we have the?
I think we should, we share parking with, um, you could just come up here.
For the record and state your name, please. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we do share parking, but it would be, it would be with the urgent care. And I think we've, uh, worked out the parking where we're gonna, uh, mark off six spaces, extra spaces for urgent care plus whatever they have now out of, out of the parking for the former Bonefish Grill.
But where the trip counts for the Firestone taken into consideration your egress and ingress on the main street? Because that's the only way out of the property for the uses of the Firestone?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, I, the trips are included in the, uh, existing no build and build three scenarios. So our trip will be on top of the, you know, Firestone trips and the urgent care trips. These are reflected in the traffic analysis.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Could you, uh, explain, uh, to us how you're gonna handle the traffic, uh, maybe the first two, two months or something, just for the public's sake and for the commissioners? If, uh, it, there might be a newness to it. It could be very busy in the beginning. So how would you handle that? If you could explain that?
Okay. So we did, we, we've spoken already with Sergeant Dean, um, to make sure that we have a relationship with the police department and we are, uh, we're willing to take on the responsibility of maintaining traffic orderliness, uh, in cooperation with the Newington Police Department. But I just want to take a moment to just call to attention that it's the likelihood that this site is gonna be a new site, that it's gonna be an exciting site, is, is probably, it's not realistic because up the street, one point seven miles away, we have Fine Fettle, who's been operating here now for three years. They're a great operator, good corporate citizen. I know the Zacks. Uh, they run a nice organization. They're gonna open up before we are. So they're gonna have traffic way before we are. There are a total of five dispensaries located within 12 miles of our proposed site that will be open before we are. Those are the existing dispensaries. Uh, that's Fine Fettle and Newington, Willbrook Wellness and Meriden, Healing Corner in Bristol, Prime Wellness in South Windsor and Curaleeth in Hartford. They will all be open before us, definitely, because they're just, they're converting through a hybrid process. Um, and we're doing a, a social equity joint venture. It's, it's a longer process. Uh, so that being said, in addition, um, there will be approximately, what's that? Oh, so we, um, okay. So we do have a traffic management plan out. I can elaborate on that. I just want to make this point. Um, there will be probably around sixty-two dispensaries from the existing eighteen medical dispensary operators and four producers. Each producer can open up two dispensaries. So there will be eight that can be created from the producers and then each of the eighteen dispensaries can open two dispensaries. So there'll be thirty-six potential dispensaries, new ones from, from those, from those opportunities. Um, plus there's gonna be lottery grants, twelve retail, four hybrid. Um, plus there's another opportunity of section one four nine applicants. That's another, uh, process where an applicant pays a three million dollar application fee and they can open a production facility and two dispensaries. Um, so there are thirty-eight applicants through the section one four nine process. So all in, we could have potentially up to one hundred and fifty-four dispensaries in the state of Connecticut through the first process, the first leg of this lottery. Um, so I, I don't think we're gonna be new. Also, last point, uh, New York State line. Uh, so we're also surrounded. So Massachusetts, everybody sees the big long lines in Massachusetts when they first opened. That was the first northeast New England state to adopt adult-use sales. So it was a novelty. It was like when Colorado first came online back in twenty fourteen. But that was years ago. Um, nobody's coming out of, from out of state into Connecticut to purchase cannabis. Uh, the New York border is forty miles away as a crow flies, forty miles from Newington. They have an adult-use program, which will probably be open before hours in Connecticut. And then Massachusetts borders twenty-five miles from Newington and they have an adult-use program. Nobody's coming here to our store. Um, I can elaborate on the traffic management program if it pleases the commissioners.
Go right ahead.
Are you interested? Okay. So, um, to extend from the parking lots on these two sides, uh, to exit, police officers will be posted at the affected locations to direct traffic for improved circulation. For delays upon exit, a flagger can direct patrons, uh, to turn right out of the driveway. They'll be instructed to turn around at predetermined locations to reroute them back onto Main Street going in the correct direction to exit. The flagger on site will direct the flow of traffic during the first week of opening and additional weeks if needed. Uh, we would like to consider contracting off-duty officers if that is a surface that the town, um, would appreciate. There's a park-and-ride location across the Turnpike on Griswaldville Avenue that we will utilize during initial weeks for employee and overflow parking if there's a need. I don't think there's gonna be any, but we're, we're preparing for it just in case. Additional staff will be on site to assist with customer questions and to direct them to designated areas. Staff wear uniforms and will be badge-appropriate for customers to ask assistance. Our traffic management plan will be reviewed with the local police for their approval and input. Like I said, we've already met with Sergeant Dean. If the actions listed above are not effective in controlling traffic response, a final option will be to utilize a reservation model like OpenTable used in restaurants. Um, and then any costs associated with utilizing public safety officials direct traffic in the first thirty days will be incurred by Verano as per Senate Bill twelve oh one, um, which is stated here. But basically, we're on the hook for all of those expenses per the bill.
Any questions from the commissioners? Okay. If there's nothing else and there's no objection, I'm going to go to the public. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak in favor of petition twenty-three dash twenty-two? Anybody in the, in the room or on Zoom?
Zoom raise your hand.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Lori Dubowski.
And my name is Lori Dubowski. I live at twenty-one oh seven Main Street in Newington.
Go right ahead.
I have, I have several questions. I, last time when they, we went through this with Krispy Kreme and the Bonefish Grill, people were parking up and down Main Street, making it very difficult for us to exit and enter our driveways. People were parking on Lewis Street and crossing. Now, are you gonna allow parking on Main Street during this procedure?
Uh, we'll, we'll answer that after you finish with your questions, okay?
Okay. My second question is that even, what was it?
Turning right.
He said all the traffic is gonna exit turning right. So that means you're sending all the traffic down into the residential neighborhood and not up to the highway? That's my second question. And then I'm worried about the traffic study, that EFOS thing that says that it's not, it's bad, it's not a good study that there's a lot of cars. It's not acceptable for residential neighborhoods to have that much traffic coming into it. And it's not acceptable for safety issues. Now, how are you gonna stop that from happening? Because that's his traffic study.
Anything else, ma'am?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. We'll try to answer those questions for you. As far as the parking on the Main Street, they're not gonna allow people, we're not gonna allow people to park on Main Street or Lewis Street. They're gonna have to direct people to a different area. And then I'll let the applicant answer the other two questions after the rest of the public speaks. Is there anybody else on Zoom that would like to speak either in favor or opposed to this?
No one has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fox, or Mike, sorry. You're always Commissioner Fox to me, Mike.
Okay, that's okay. I'm not that old that I can't stand. Michael J. Fox, nineteen oh one Main Street. Thanks for the compliment, uh, Mr. Chairman. Sometimes I think I'm still a commissioner. Uh, I remember when I was in the service in the sixties, we all had, uh, a film that, there was a film that we had to watch. If you're ever in the service, you, even if you're not in service, I think it was called Reefer Madness. And according to, uh, to these films, you know, anybody that spoke marijuana would go absolutely nuts. And as you, and, you know, jumping forward to, to the twenty-first century, I don't see that happening. But, uh, I think as the applicant said, that he took a couple of words right out of my mouth, right now, people, Connecticut residents are going to, uh, New York and to Massachusetts for their, uh, for their marijuana. Uh, and, uh, whether or not this dispensary, uh, gets built, it's still gonna happen. And, uh, you know, uh, notwithstanding the complaints about, uh, again, about marijuana being, uh, addictive and this, that and the other thing, uh, it, it's here, it's gonna stay. And, uh, I, I see no reason why we, why we shouldn't, uh, approve this, this, this applicant, application. Uh, after all, it's really, uh, you know, uh, there's a little bit of competition for the people across the street. Can't hurt anything. And, uh, there aren't that, you know, there haven't been that many permits issued. And, uh, I think it would be good for Newington. I really don't think, and, uh, you know, I don't live too far from, uh, from that corner. And I, and I remember, uh, the events that the previous speaker was talking about. It was a mess. I don't, I, I personally, you know, really don't see that happen. But I do, I do approve this and, uh, you know, good luck if you get it.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak from the, from here?
Yes, I would.
Yep, come right forward, please. State your name for the record if you'd like.
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name legally is Danielle Stare. I go by Dani. My pronouns are I-G-N. Uh, I am a user of cannabis recreationally and medically. I'm also a veteran myself. So thank you to those who serve in the room. I appreciate that. Uh, I'm here today in complete support of this company coming to Connecticut. I've worked in the legal cannabis industry in Massachusetts for the last three years, uh, serving most specifically, uh, those who are social equity applicants, economic empowerment companies, and in areas that are disproportionately harmed by the war on drugs. Let's not forget. So while we are comparing notes about donut shops, uh, I know that this question about traffic that took two meetings didn't come up during the urgent care conversation when they wanted to open, though the, um, needs are very similar. So let me explain to you why I believe that. Uh, I have post-traumatic stress disorder. I have depression. Uh, I am a single parent. Uh, I have been losing my job due to COVID. I had to move, uh, to Connecticut because of that and I couldn't afford housing in this area, uh, even with my disability rating that I get from the VA. I was an alcoholic. You have a whole lot of alcohol, uh, availability in this town. There's no cannabis availability for me in this town. So I have to go travel to other states out of my way. And I can't even do that because I'm a single parent. So what do I do with my daughter? Who's three years old, by the way, that I birthed, who I left the military for to support and is thriving today regardless. So when you hear these gentlemen up here who have already paid millions of dollars, which is absurd in itself, that they want to run a business who is helping the people of this town and not only this town, their surrounding ones, because Connecticut is already too late to the market. Massachusetts is an example, an extreme example of how wonderful this can be. Not only is it providing jobs, it's providing education. And considering the lack of education of people in Connecticut around use of marijuana, proper use of it, and how it has helped me to this day remain a year and a half sober of alcohol. And without it, I would not be. So please take that into consideration. It's not just about this company. It is a very broader scope of the social injustice that this specific cannabis commissions and among the state, the federal government, and still in the town level has to be spoken about at several meetings for them to do business. So thank you all for your time today. I appreciate it. And I hope you wish you nothing but luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak either in favor or, or against this application? Anybody on Zoom?
No one else has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
We have a hand raised in the back.
Right. Please come forward.
So I'm at sixty-three Fox One Court here in Newington. I'm super nervous. I've never spoken in town council. So this is important for me to be here because like this is how passionately I am about this particular topic. And can you hear me okay if I'm asking?
If you could use a microphone, pull the microphone a little closer. Appreciate it.
Is this better? Okay. So, um, I am not in favor of the So I am not in favor of the dispensary being opened. It literally is in my backyard pretty much because I'm at 63 Fox Run. So as I exit, I know you guys were speaking about traffic today, but I'm more speaking about the unintended consequences that may not also be the traffic-related consequences. I think it also speaks to, as was stated earlier, there's already five within a 12-mile radius, so I'm kind of like, why one more? If there's another one that's over a mile away that's going to be opening soon, why one more? So I'm just concerned as a person who, excuse me, who lives that close, and leaving my house during rush hour is difficult, pulling out of that intersection right there where they're talking about taking that right and heading down into town. It's already difficult to take that left from out of that area, as well as taking a right if you're just going down the Berlin Turnpike. So traffic is important to me, as well as just the unintended consequences of having a dispensary that close to my house in comparison to the other one that is not as close to other residential areas. There's that shopping plaza that's right near me, there is that urgent care center, but there's never traffic coming out of there, literally. I've lived here for the past almost four years and haven't ever had issues with that. It's been more so, I think, just having individuals, and I appreciate all the things that were said earlier, and I appreciate your service, and I thank you for that. As you were talking, I was like, oh my God, I'm getting nervous for him. And I know that there are other benefits for the use of it, however, with so many popping up, you gave multiple examples of many dispensaries that are potentially going to be opening within the next couple of months potentially, and it's literally right down the street. So I'm just curious as to why the need for another one, if there's one a little over a mile down the street.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or opposed? Anyone on Zoom?
Has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman?
Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Chantel. I'm from 5052 East Cedar Street. The traffic, I'm extremely worried about. Already for my area, especially East Cedar Street, just from the New Britain traffic just going to the Berlin Turnpike, it's terrible. Now, I work in healthcare, I do work for Hartford Healthcare, and I'm a visiting nurse around the Weathersfield, Rocky Hill, Cromwell, and Glastonbury area. So I'm traveling on the road 24/7. Traffic for me is terrible. I am extremely worried about the traffic. That's just big to me. 24/7, it's just a lot of traffic. My next-door neighbor had a car that just crashed into her house. Till this day, I still am fearful that, just sitting in my living room, charting at night for my patients, that I could possibly just traffic. If the way people drive, I see people in front of my house fall asleep in their car. I just think this is, it's just going to add extra traffic. And sorry, but, and again, I hear you because I'm in healthcare, okay? But I'm just really just worried more about the traffic, and I'm just thinking, just why Newington? The Berlin Turnpike is just, it's a lot already. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to speak either in favor or opposed?
Can I make additional comments?
We usually only allow once. If you want to make it real short, I'll allow you. Anybody hands up?
Well, their hand up, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, the applicant has the time to answer some of these questions and rebut any traffic information for the public.
Again, for the record, Chairman Kermit Hua, KWH Enterprise LLC. The first question is about parking, you know, what if someone parked on Main Street? You know, if there's a no parking sign or if they blocked traffic, they deserve to be told. I mean, I just think that's common sense. We only have two lanes. If you park on the street and you are in fact affecting one lane of traffic movement, I mean, someone should call the cop and tell them. The second question about right turn. Right turn, we are not asking everyone to right turn to exit, only if there is a police officer directing traffic at the exit driveway, and people are really, you know, during the rushed first two weeks, people have difficulty waiting, you know, three, you know, two, three minutes getting out, especially left turn is difficult. I think at that point, we recommend the officer just direct people, make a right turn, you know, go make a U-turn down the street, and that's the, you know, seems to be the logical way to do it. As far as the character of Main Street, you know, if you listen to the previous commenter's comment, almost as if Main Street is a local street, it is not. It is not a local street, it's not a collective street, it is actually a numbered state road, Route 176. So it is a, I wouldn't call it thoroughfare, it is a main corridor at least for through traffic. So it's not someone's backyard. I don't think, you know, I don't think we're doing anything wrong if we, you know, temporarily direct people, make a right turn, travel northbound on Main Street and make a U-turn. I think that's what the function of this road is. Thank you.
Fairly seen, again. Thank you, Kermit. I just wanted to mention that when Krispy Kreme came to town, there were only two Krispy Kremes in town at that point, and Krispy Kreme has a reputation of showing up and creating long lines, and they do a lot of promotions, and they want lines at their business. That's kind of their business model, whether they're operating, you know, in Minnesota and Connecticut, or if they're in Canada, Colombia, the Philippines, or even Moscow. Google Krispy Kreme and traffic, and they come up together. There's just hundreds, hundreds of articles. So that's not what we're going to be. I do want to mention, one of the questions that was asked, and I appreciate it, the Y2 in Newington. Well, not every dispensary is cookie cutter. We're all different businesses, we're all different brands, we offer different services, we offer different products. You know, it's Apple and Android, it's different restaurants on the Berlin Turnpike, it's Best Buy and the computer stores. Really, it's another opportunity for the patients and customers to try another company, another service. There's also, there's a 3% tax benefit to the municipality, to the town that hosts the businesses. So that 3% coming from two dispensaries will be redirected to Newington to be used at Newington's discretion within the rules of the cannabis bill.
It's only on the recreation end.
On the recreation end.
On the recreation end, when that starts, and then automatically, is that how it works?
Or? It's, the majority is going to be adult-use sales. There will be no tax on the medical card because it's medicine, we don't tax it today, we won't tax it in the future. But the majority of the sales will be, I want to say, there was a Yukon study that quoted between $400 million to $600 million a year annually for the adult-use side of the business, and then around $200 million for the medical side. So like I said, the majority will be adult-use sales. Study is bad, traffic turning rate, parking on Main, and the unintended uses, this is very, very important. There's no consumption on-site. We don't want customers using on-site, we maintain security cameras and surveillance. We don't want anybody using on-site. If they're caught, they'll be asked not to do it again. If they do it again, they can't be our customer anymore. It's that serious and that severe, the Department of Consumer Protection regulates that very, very, very closely. We're going to have licensed pharmacists running the site. They're licensed by the Department of Consumer Protection. Their licenses are at risk if they violate the rules and the requirements of maintaining that very strict licensing compliance. And unintended uses, why more, take a right or left? I think, I'm sorry, I've scribbled everywhere on my pad here. Okay, last point. This business that we'll be opening here, this is a partnership, this is a social equity joint venture. So Verano is partnering with a social equity applicant who will own 50% of the enterprise and will participate in 50% of the profit and 50% of the work. And so this is a joint partnership with someone who meets the criteria as a social equity applicant in the state of Connecticut under the cannabis program. That's everything, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Braverman has raised his hand on Zoom.
We're getting to it. Okay, you can sit back. Thank you very much. Okay, the public has one last chance if they'd like to speak, and we have somebody on Zoom. Go right ahead.
Hello? Me or who else?
Go ahead, Commissioner Braverman.
Okay. My question is, have we done any study on the effect on property values? Has it been looked at? And what impact will it have to adjacent properties that are in town?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We can discuss that later on in the meeting. I don't think there was any impact. Verano, do you have anything to say, Verano?
No, but I can answer that under public hearing, just if, so it's not like a new information.
Go right ahead, because then I'm going to open up the floor.
There is no study that I have done with regards to that, but I did think about this because it's a novelty use. And we did talk about this to some extent when we did adoption of the zoning regulations for this. As you know, and as I reminded you at the last hearing, the zoning regulations for this use were adopted very recently. We discussed the locations as to where this use was to be allowed. Originally, we allowed it at Berlin Turnpike Zone, then we discussed to some extent whether the PD Zone was an appropriate zone. By adoption of that zone, the commission considered impact to the neighbor, to the neighbors. So it is inappropriate at this point to turn around and look at these kind of impacts. So that's one point. This particular location and this particular object, this building, this is a restaurant that's been empty for a while. Inside this restaurant, it is my understanding that it's like fully equipped. There is like oven and I don't know what else. But if there was a sit-down restaurant to want to go there, because it's so equipped, it's like a key turn facility, somebody would have gone there. So there is, for whatever reason, apparently there is no need, there is no interest of another sit-down restaurant to go into this location. The other uses that are low-traffic generation uses are, for example, office uses. That's really, we haven't received any interest in anybody to open a new office space in, this is not even Newington, this is from my prior employment. I have not had any interest in anybody opening a new office in probably at least like five years. That market is just not there anymore. Some low-generation retail uses, low-traffic generational retail uses are places like furniture stores. They don't tend to generate too much traffic. That's very specialty kind of a business. Specialty retail stores, that's also peculiar, particular, you don't get those very often. Advanced auto parts, places like that, they don't tend to generate tons of traffic, but they're very specific. And then low traffic, other low-traffic generators that we get a lot of requests for are like self-storage units. Now, options in these locations then seem to be like, do you really want to have an empty building which negatively impacts residential neighborhood around? There are studies proving that. There are mathematics showing, like actual studies that show negative impact to residential neighborhoods, off-wakened buildings. Or you can have something that is such a low-traffic generator that is perhaps a storage building, that's really not desirable. And then I was thinking, perhaps another use that could be interested in location like this would be a fast-food restaurant, but that tends to be something that over time sustains higher traffic generation. This seems to be something that will generate traffic at beginning, but then it will dissipate over time, hopefully. A fast-food place, I believe, would probably maintain that for like a longer period of time. So that's sort of my assessment of impact to the neighborhood, I think, of a place like this.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we have one last opportunity for the public, so if anybody from the public wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name if you'd like for the record.
Evening, commissioners. My name is David Morrisden. I live on Maple Hill Avenue. I happen to be a member of the Economic Development Commission, and I'm also a Realtor. Not that that means anything to any of you, but what I've noticed as a Realtor is that property has been vacant for many, many months, several years now. I'm not even sure how long it is. And it looks like not a lot of people are stepping up to take it over and bring us the opportunity to have a, an income-producing, tax-paying entity in that site. And all well and good for anybody on this commission to sit there and say, well, wouldn't it be nice to have an advanced auto parts there? Wouldn't it be nice to have a fast-food store there? But believe me when I tell you, they had plenty of time to call and see it and make an offer on it if they had interest. So where are they? I would say if somebody's sitting in the background with somebody in their pocket, that would be a better operator than this one sounds like it is. Forward and let them bid. So having said that, I think, and I wasn't coming here to vote in favor of either one of them, I want you to know that right off the bat, I should be home having my glass of wine, getting ready for, getting ready for sleep, but I'm not. I'm here to say, I'm willing to tell you that I feel that this is a good thing for the neighborhood, if you can just work out your traffic issues, your ins and outs and rights and lefts, and all the other things that have to come about when your traffic study people are stepping up to the plate and telling you what we need to do. I vote in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Morrisden. Is there anybody on Zoom that has their hand up? Anybody else in the room? You have one last opportunity, if you'd like to come up and state something?
I just want to address, you know, those neighbors behind this facility that's proposed to make them understand the abuse of alcohol and accidents that has ravaged the area and the nation for years. This is already recreationally legal. All the people who need this medication and feel like me, who have tried 25 different medications for my untreatable diagnoses by doctors, this is the one that worked. And if I was in this situation, like I am myself as a Connecticut resident, very close by here, I don't have an option. And what you have left an option with is large multi-state operators who give people products without thought, who have the money to, you know, make 150 dispensaries in your area, and you have a person here who's trying to include a social justice aspect to it while at the same time providing somebody like myself with the regulated cannabis industry that's been lab-tested so that I know that I'm not getting something that's moldy, that I know I'm not getting something with a different drug inside of it, that I know that I can use this plant that is being, you know, written about in novels throughout every state in the country right now, trying to figure out how to regulate. And I just am here to remind the neighbors of the impact on that and that potentially the drivers and things that you are worried about have nothing in fact to do with this since it's already happening in your neighborhood and it's not even open yet. and it's not even open yet. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have somebody on Zoom?
Elaine, you can unmute yourself. Go ahead. Elaine Matulus, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, I apologize. My name's Elaine Irwin Matulus and I own the property of 2116 Main Street, right? It directly abuts this property. And as I spoke before, I am opposed to this. And I think one of my biggest objections is the traffic patterns that would go in and out of that property. All the traffic would go onto Main Street and make a congested area that much worse if they wanted to try to redirect exits onto the turnpike. And also, I think when you look at this site, this is just not an ideal site for this type of operation because of the traffic patterns. There's many other locations on the Pike that would be suitable for this. Like if you take Pascon Place or any part of the Pike Pass where the Budne development is south of that. Or if you look at other areas further up the Pike, which would be beyond where Aldis is and beyond that where the traffic patterns are much different. Just, it's gonna create a nightmare. We've had people parking on the lawns at our property from before with Bonefish Grill. And the use will be that much worse with this operation. So I would like the committee to respectfully look at this location for this particular use and make the determination that, you know, if they do want to come into town and there already is a dispensary further up the Pike and there are other ones in the area, that the public need is being met with that. But this particular location just is not suitable for this type of use because of the traffic pattern problems. And I'm just very opposed to it. And, you know, a special permit is based upon, you know, a particular use for that property that would not be detrimental to the neighborhood. And this would be extremely detrimental to the neighborhood. The zoning was changed on the property that I own to make it, you know, residential. And then, you know, you're, you know, a lot asking for something like this to go in. It just isn't consistent with what the zoning is. And I just don't think this type of operation with this type of traffic pattern would be in such close proximity to residential property. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on Zoom with their hand up?
Hand raised.
Is there anybody else in the room that hasn't spoken that would like to speak here?
And it's Matulus, just raise your hand again, the one who just spoke.
No. I'm sorry, you just, she just spoke?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Any questions from the Commissioners? If there's no objection.
I have one. Is there a capacity to turn out of the property southbound onto the Pike?
No. No, they can turn, not on the Berlin Turnpike directly, they can't turn.
Turn in and not out.
Okay.
It's out, yeah.
So in and they think they have to direct everybody to the right. People will be taking left if they want to get on the Berlin Turnpike. So I think it'll be, you know, a mixture of turning.
Turning. Well, what they said was only if there is, you know, an overflow.
If there was an overflow, they would direct them over to the left. Yep, yes.
And my guess is the officer is only going to have them turn right if he feels it's too, not safe enough.
Correct, correct. All right, if there's no objection, I'll entertain a motion to close this petition and move it to old business.
Yeah, I move petition 2322 and move it to old business for possible action.
Motion made by Commissioner Woods, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lenars. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries to move petition 23, to close petition 2322 and move it to old business. The next petition we have, Renata, do we group petition 2122 and 2222 together? Or are those separate?
We did group them together. Is Mr. Bon Giovanni on?
He is.
Okay.
Okay.
So Mr. Bon Giovanni will present these together.
Okay.
But the votes are obviously going to be.
Be separate. Okay, so if I could have Commissioner Havens, if you could read these two petitions, please.
Yes. Petition 21-22, special permit, section 3.4.9, to allow an interior lot at 105 Cedarwood Lane. Applicant Cynthia Ziegler, owner, estate of Francis C. Callahan, AKA Francis Callahan and Cynthia Callahan, contact Alan Bon Giovanni. Petition 22-22, re-subdivision at 105 Cedarwood Lane. Applicant Cynthia Ziegler, owner, estate of Francis C. Callahan, AKA Francis Callahan and Cynthia Callahan, contact Alan Bon Giovanni.
Okay, very good. Are you there, Alan?
I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to share the screen now. For the record, my name is Alan Bon Giovanni. I'm a licensed land surveyor in the state of Connecticut. My office addresses 170 Payne Road here in Newington. We have two applications before you. One is for a re-subdivision and that is subdividing the existing house, existing house lot at 105 Cedarwood Lane. It currently is about 2.1 acres in land and it's an R40 zone. And we're going to divide the north portion of the whole property into, create about a 38,000 square foot lot. This whole development, both applications are basically for one single family house in the R20 zone. We're asking for an interior lot because of the frontage that. I'm sorry, because of the frontage that is on Cedarwood Lane, it provides for the 20-foot required access strip to, owned and fee by the proposed lot to access the main lot itself. This is a pretty unique situation in that there's already an existing driveway shaded in gray here that services 99 Cedarwood Lane through an easement. That will be a mutual driveway to service the new house as well as 99 Cedarwood Lane. But we do have our own 20-foot access if something was to change in the future. And we'll also be using that to root the utilities to service the property. The subject property, the proposed lot and the existing lot both meet and or exceed all of the zoning requirements and both requirements for the R20 zone. By a large margin, these are large lots, not characteristic of the typical lots in Newington. And we are up on Cedar Mountain. There is the ridgeline protection zone. That is along the westerns, the ridgeline is along the western edge of the property per section 4.4.6D. Single family homes are allowed within the setback area. And if I can zoom out here, just to show you what it's going to look like. This is the existing house at 105 Cedarwood. On the bottom, on the north, is the 99 Cedarwood. And you basically, if you drew a line between them, this house is going to be situated in that same location in respect to the ridgeline. Both of the existing houses can't be seen from, from the western part of town. So we're not going to be obstructing or clearing the ridgeline. It'll still have the same appearance if this house is to be built as it does today. The lots will be served with MBC sewer and water, minimal grading. There is some clearing required to accommodate this house. But it, it meets the requirements. It is a nice location for a house. We have received comments from planning and engineering. We've addressed all those comments. We've received favorable reports from Michael D'Amato, who reviewed the plan. And I talked with our town engineer today and he is satisfied that we've addressed the comments as well. Again, this is not a major development. It's for a single family house. I think my presentation kind of covers that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bon Giovanni. We'll go to the Commissioners. Do you have any questions for the applicant before we go to the public? Pretty simple application, looks pretty good. We'll go to, we'll open it up to the public right now. Anybody wishing to speak either in favor or against? Raise your hand on Zoom or please come forward.
No one on Zoom at the moment.
Once again, if there's anybody in the audience or on Zoom that would like to speak either in favor or against this application, please come forward. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion from the Commissioners.
I make a motion, we close petition 21-22 and 22-22. Move them to old business for possible action this evening.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to close petition 21-22 and 22-22 from Commissioner Havens. Do I have a second?
Agreed.
Seconded by Commissioner Hagerty. Any discussion? No, hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, our next public care is petition 25-22. If Vice Chairman Claffey could read petition 25-22, I'd appreciate it.
Petition 25-22, special permit, section 3.4.7 for conversion of an older home into a multi-dwelling home at 44 East Cedar Street. Applicant owner, Robert J. Centieri.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'm going to have the town planner discuss and give us an update on. Oh, we have the applicant here?
Yeah.
Come forward, please, and tell us what this is concerning. From what I understand, this is a home that has already been converted and we're just trying to get the paperwork straightened out, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. I received this from Mike D'Amato last week. It was asking like application summary, Robert Santar, 44 East Cedar Street, Newington. They asked for a few things here and I did email off to Mike D'Amato the structure of the home and the, you know, showing them where all the bathrooms and bedrooms and kitchens were. I'm trying to sell my home. And when I bought my place back in 2006, I thought I bought a multifamily. That was grandfathered and over the years, I've learned a lot about housing in the last three months. I should have probably filled out an application at the zoning department. I've been there so much. Oh my God. So I'm here today, like I filed for a special permit for multi-use. I'm trying to move into mom's house to help take care of her because things are going on over there that I got to keep a close eye on. So for this to go through, I've done a lot of footwork in the last couple of months. I've got affidavits from previous owners. You know, I've been here taking copies of everything in that folder upstairs. When I bought the place, the placard, title card, wherever you call it, it was multi-use. I've had three kitchens, three bathrooms. I had to evict somebody out of the place when I moved in because they lived in the other dwelling for 25-plus years. Unfortunately, I went to the courthouse to try to get records of this. Nobody keeps records. They burn them, do whatever it was. So it's been a lot of work trying to get the proper information so I can continue with what I'm doing and close out my house in a proper fashion here. It's been put off an extra couple, two and a half months, it is what it is. But so with this special permit, I mean, I fill all the criteria that the town would need to have this as a multifamily. So I guess I'm asking the town, TVZ here, to look at this and, you know, grant me the multipurpose use for my house so I can move on.
Okay, I understand. Let's turn it over to Renata if you'd like to clarify anything, Renata.
So it is our, so the house was built in, I believe, 1904. And there is an old garage, which we don't know exactly when it was built with its own. And the applicant approached us, and actually not the applicant, but I believe either lender or buyer approached our zoning officer and requested a certificate of zoning compliance. Now, in order for us to issue a certificate of zoning compliance, we have to be able to prove that this is a legally non-conforming multifamily home, which we were not able to establish because we did not have records showing that this was built as a two-family home in 1904 or that it was legally converted through some sort of zoning permitting process since. So when Mr. Centier approached us with this request, we were not able to issue that. So the only way to legalize this is through either processing this conversion, which is a special permit by the Commission, or appealing CEO's decision and going ZBA route, which we did not feel was necessary because this house meets the requirements for the old house conversion. There are two units within the house. The floor plans and the other perimeters meet the requirements of the zoning regulations. And then there is a unit within the garage that is a third sort of non-conforming unit as well. So that's the situation right now, so.
Very good, thank you. Is there any questions from the Commissioners? Seems pretty simple. We'll open it up to the public. You're all set. I'll just go to the public, in case there's anybody from the public wishing to speak or against this. Anybody on Zoom wishing to speak?
One has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody from the audience seeing none? I'll entertain a motion from the Commissioners to close petition 25-22 and move to old business.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Woods to close petition 25-22. Do I have a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Claffey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion carries to move petition 25-22 to close it and move it to old business. Thank you very much. Right now, we're at approval of minutes for May 11th. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve minutes of May 11th, 2022 meeting.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Claffey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Havens. Any discussion on the minutes? Any corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion carries to approve the minutes of May 11th, 2022. And now on our agenda is new business. And we're going to have an 8-24. If you could put that up on the, do you have that on the screen or not?
We have lines, we'll just go and grab.
It'll be right over, we'll grab them.
Oh, we did.
Yes. We're taking care of your job.
I just went and got myself cookies.
Commissioners are hungry here. We got no swag, we didn't get any samples, no cookies, no nothing. It's all right.
Like cookies, cookies for dinner, that's like not good.
I think you could have brought some pastry.
I was thinking of other samples, but.
Like the awkward school dance.
Yeah.
See my water's running. Let's pull some of this right here. The power cut this guy's. How you doing? So um we are at an eight dash twenty-four for Patterson School Parking Lot. I want to thank you. We have it up on the screen. Um, if you could just briefly uh explain a little bit about what you're doing and we may, some commissioners may have some questions.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, my name's Lou Jacobowitz from the Board of Ed. The plan design you're looking at was the fourth iteration of our uh, you know, design concepts that we uh were considering here. Uh, we have significant uh immediate parking, multi-year parking problem where we have the need for around a hundred five cars to be parked on the premises. We have seventy-five parking spaces. In addition, we have very difficult uh queuing lines for all the cars for daily drop-offs. Uh, because right now, all the students who dropped off at the front door of the school, you get about three cars in the driveway and then everybody's up on Halloran Drive going back to the stop sign, which adds more congestion to the intersection of Church Street and Halloran Drive. With our first iteration of this, we were looking at doing just more parking in the uh basically in the south side of the uh lot. And as we looked at it, the other issues are, can we do something about the uh problems with the queuing and student safety and trying to get as many cars as possible off the road and through the uh Board of Ed property to manage traffic much better um and safer for all the kids that are there. So as it turned out, um, if, you know, when you go a little lower, the Church Street side entrance is going to become a one-way in uh feature of the parking lot. And then the area going straight behind the building is just a continuation of the existing uh parking spaces that are there. And then you have the ninety-degree turn that goes straight up uh from there, which will be the basic path to travel. We're gonna put a new sidewalk in all the way along that area, which would become the primary student drop-off area every day. So we were estimating we can carry about eighteen cars in the queue simultaneously here, which would uh keep all those cars off of uh the intersection area. And what will happen is when we build through the final cutout in uh the curb cup for the uh pass-through into the front driveway, they would then be going across to the far side entrance and then discharge onto Halloran Street a hundred yards or so down the road from the intersection of Church and Cedar. So this has multiple benefits. Uh, we had two minor ADA uh issues that uh everybody wanted to deal with. One is to get all the handicap spaces to the front door of the building. And the second is at the very bottom of the screen on the left is a stoop, no, further up. It says location of re-trap tank. Just over there, there's a little walk-off there from the cafeteria, which is a step down. It's an ADA barrier. So with the way this is going to be rebuilt and filled, it's going to allow us to achieve ADA compliance in that part of the building along the whole sidewalk system that's there. The, what is not shown on the map right now is also the integration with the solar power project that we have for that school. The area for the uh where the inverter is going to go is going to be just uh above the area where the current transformer is just tucked inside the sidewalk, just a little bit left of there, a little, a little further up. Yeah, a little bit up in there. Yeah, that grassy area is where it'll fit and we've been working with the engineers on that to get, you know, proper integration for all this. So uh the traffic, uh, excuse me, the uh parking count will go to a hundred five regular spaces plus five uh ADA spaces uh that's here. You'll pick up the queuing area uh for all the cars. And in addition, it'll be a significant improvement for relief on the weekends because with all the cars for student and child activities out in the play fields and back, a lot of times the cars just find their way onto the playground area on the far side of the building, which doesn't have any measures of protection or managing traffic because it's not designed for that. Here, by being able to have a better overall parking configuration, uh, we're really trying to discourage individuals from, you know, taking their car somewhere it shouldn't go. And we'll be building that in with signage and uh the measures of uh just, you know, asking everybody to be better citizens as part of this because we can provide that resource that's here. So what happens in the end is the totality of all the paved sur- surfaces will be done. Besides building the new area, we're gonna do a mill and overlay for the south side and the north side parking lots to make one contiguous improvement. And it'll be uh one and done for the uh, you know, the activity. Uh, the overall uh response to this, uh, we presented it uh to the town engineer. They were, he was fine within his office, was fine with uh, you know, all the refinements in the plan itself. Uh, this did go to the local traffic authority agent, um, Officer Dean at the uh PD and he was fine with this. He thought it was great that we would get the traffic off and away from the intersection of Church and Cedar. So uh, that's a quick uh overview of it. Uh.
Go to the commissioners, see if any commissioners have any questions from.
There's someone, uh, there's someone who used to go to Anna Reynolds with their two, my two sons. It's a queuing problem there too, but the only question I have is in the morning, you seem to be coming off church, but you're not utilizing any of the rest of the new parking area to queue?
Well, we will just because of the sheer load of the building.
Or they queuing in from the, from the Church Street side or the Halloran?
Church Street side. If they'll either take parking in behind the building or do the loop that's there for the other part to be a way.
Didn't want in the afternoon when they, I've never watched this in the afternoon of how it queues up now if you only come in on Halloran. So I think that's a great improvement.
Yeah, quite, yeah, because I used to drop my kids off there for afternoon preschool and it was always a total show there. Is there any signage directing people to enter the property via church as opposed to Halloran? Okay.
We're a little further along. Uh, you know, we have uh uh worked with both Officer Dean and Mike Morgan, who's our security officer for how they would want to uh design the signage for all its purposes. And we have security officers at every building, so they're intimately knowledgeable of exactly where the problems are and the best way to approach the signage that we need.
Right, because you're not closing off that horseshoe on Halloran. That's staying open.
That's correct, right. Uh, realistic uh daily management is the security officer will park his car in that entranceway while the major queuing and drop-off activities occurring. So it really creates a nice one-way flow until the cars get back out onto a Halloran uh closer to John Wallace.
Any other questions? Are you having any lighting there uh in the parking lot?
Five light poles uh installed as part of this. We have two right now that come down because of the adjustments in design. Uh, there'll be three uh uh along the perimeter of the left side of the new parking area. And then two are on the lower part. And then we're also putting on about a dozen wall packs around the west side and the uh rear side of the building.
Will it be possible so that if there's no events going on that they're not all on uh as an impact to the residents across the street? Is there, or what's the policy? What would you normally?
Usually it's eleven o'clock where they go off, a shutdown for the night. In working with our designers on the project, uh, these were supposed to have a lower profile. Uh, the wall pack lights are realistically just for the sidewalk area and into the first uh area of walking across the parking lot. Lights that are on the left side will be beaming back toward the school to eliminate the parking areas at that point.
Very good. I I appreciate that.
Sure.
And um Commissioner?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions. Um, I didn't wa- aware that uh we were gonna go through this tonight. So I did have some notes that I forwarded to uh engineering. And the communications I got back was to contact Board of Ed uh for some of the questions.
Go right ahead with the questions. We'll see if we can.
Okay, well, so there's no traffic study that was done?
No, it's all the observation of the security team that works for the school district. Our uh district-wide officer is Mike Morgan, uh, who's a former police officer in town, as well as the local
Traffic Authority.
Everyday uh security officer assigned to that building. And all the principal and, you know, staff members input that we get.
Okay. Um, as far as uh, is that area, area gonna be filled or is it gonna be cut?
Right, right. In the area where the parking lot is, just on the west side of the building, that has a basically a bowl, so it goes down about two feet in elevation. So along the sidewalk area, it will be raised about one foot to make up the difference we need for ADA compliance. Then it'll have the curb drop-off uh and the elevation for the uh all the pavement will probably be about a foot and a half higher than what the current uh bowl shape is. So all our underground utilities are fine shape. We have no issues with.
Right, that was one of the considerations that I was asking about was uh, you know, if we're doing cutting, uh, how deep are the conduits?
Now, is it? Surveilled and measured and everything is uh addressed as being fine. They're all.
Be uh getting, putting conduit conduit in to get, move the overhead?
Yes, correct. Those will go underground as part of this. And when I was at the town council with this discussion yesterday, uh, they asked us to consider putting additional conduit into possibly uh facilitate adding in a charging station uh for electric vehicles at a later date.
Yeah, that was one of my questions also because there is available right now uh projects with the state and you can get funds to even pre-wire, not, not necessarily have to put, put it in uh right away. But it def- definitely if we could put the the conduit system in underneath there.
Yep, I alerted our uh architect on this project to incorporate that and uh I started making calls. I didn't get any responses back from EverSource today on that, but you know, we put.
All right, I'll say, I think that's, oh, well, they were, they were taking, there's bollards behind the transformer right now and it it looks like they're taking those out and putting less ball- bollards in there?
No, there'll be more. Uh, what it's gonna be, it's a uh the transformer itself will be protected per EverSource requirements. There'll also be additional bollards put in to uh quartering off the area where we're gonna put the two dumpsters that we use every day with a uh chain-linked fence with the uh mesh uh privacy that's in it to give it a better look. And that's also going to be part of the uh solar power uh enclosure for the uh inverters that they put.
Okay, because that, the bollards that were shown on the drawing there were, you know, far, far apart from each other. And with the dumpsters, you know, the the dumps dumpsters could, you know, get into that space, you know, get, get to the transformer. But if you're, you're saying that it's gonna be protected, you know.
Right, we will make sure it's not, not an issue.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah.
Good.
Braverman has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Commissioner Braverman.
Uh, with regard to the EV pre-power, whatever, do you know what level the uh charging stations will be at?
No, there's nothing being proposed right now. They're gonna look into it to see if there's any grants or something uh possible that they could uh apply for and then they'll put in some appropriate ones, I believe. Am I correct?
That's what we'll try to do. Right, there's a significant difference in the power draw to do a bus compared to a uh regular automobile. So I'm not quite up on that stuff right now, so.
Anything else, Commissioner Braverman?
Fast charge or slow trickle charge? I mean, there's different levels of charging for EVs.
I think it's unknown right now, Commissioner Braverman. They're gonna look in, they're gonna look into it and hopefully they can add a few if it uh if they can get some grants for it, I believe.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Braverman. Any other questions?
One, one last uh consideration, uh, security cameras.
Yes.
Um, because you're putting up uh poles, uh, have you, have your security people looked at whether they wanted to position, you know, move some cameras to that area? And again, would be.
They haven't made any decision if they want to put uh cameras on the light poles themselves that we're putting in. Uh, the power of the cameras that we have right now uh are tremendous. You know, they would have no problem uh being able to get a quality shot from the ones that are mounted on the side of the building to cover the parking lot. So they may not request that uh for us. We do have the ones that will read license plates and uh if necessary uh with the resolution that they offer. Uh, once, once we get to the point in the project where uh Mr. Morgan would want to make an adjustment on that with the cameras, we'll be, you know, fully prepared to do that.
Yeah, or it put a conduit in so that it's available at a later point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's uh no objections, I'll entertain a motion to uh close this eight dash twenty-four and move it to old business for action.
Make a motion that we close eight, this eight dash twenty-four, move it for action this evening.
All right, motion made by Vice Chairman Claffey. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Trister. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move it to old business. Thank you very much, Lou. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, uh, our next session is old business. Um, we have a petition nineteen dash twenty-two, zoning regulation amendment, section six point one three, section nine point one pertaining to accessory apartments and to opt out of accessory apartment provisions of PA twenty-one twenty-nine, SB sixty-one oh seven. Applicant Newington Town Planning and Zoning, contact Renata. Um, so I'll start it off. I, I uh, I'm all in favor of opting out. I don't think that it is a good thing to destroy our single-family homes and uh have apartments either attached or detached to every house. Um, I think we offer um two families in a couple of different zones right now. And we also offer accessory apartments in the regulations and I, I don't have a problem with the regulation we have right now. Um, I'm willing to look at it and maybe modify it. I'm all, I'm open to that. But I'm definitely in favor of sending this to the town council and having them hold the public hearing um so that we could get more people involved and 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 possibly opt out of this. Um, I'll open it up to the commissioners for your thoughts on the text amendment and or opting out. Uh, go down the line. Um, Commissioner Claffey?
I can't agree with you more, Chairman Dean.
Okay. Commissioner Lenars?
I have the same opinion. Um, a couple of people uh had asked questions about what that opting out means. I think there was some confusion by opting out of the state regulation that we were gonna be against, not allowing, not having, not permitting accessory apartments, and that's obviously not true. So opting out, I think, is the best way for our town to proceed. Like Gail said earlier, we have a hundred and sixty-nine towns to have a blanket policy for all of them. I think is a little bit much because each town is a little bit different from each other. And going forward, looking at the um accessory apartment use and provisions, I think it's a good idea, maybe keeping them as they are, some discussion, changing them, modifying them. Who knows? But yes, opting out would be my, my.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lenars. Commissioner Hagerty?
I totally agree. We should opt out.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagerty. Com- Commissioner Gil.
Myself will also opt out.
Okay. Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, well, I think uh Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine is very well intentioned when it comes to reality and we have probably twenty-five, thirty percent of our housing stock is maybe even under a thousand square feet or at a thousand square feet. I'm not quite sure how that works. Um, so I don't think right now we have any other option but to option out, so I would support that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Havens?
I also support opting out. I don't think the nature of the town needs to be dictated by uh the state capital.
Commissioner Tristan?
Uh, I disagree. I think we should stay with it and opt out. I think the uh state statute is uh consistent with their plan of conservation and development and I think it'll be good for our affordable housing.
And um I believe in affordable housing too, and that's why we're allowing some apartments to come in and hopefully with more affordable housing. I just think that uh the uh we end up having no single-family homes in town anymore. We would uh, it'd be like not having zoning regulations almost. Um, so that's what I think. Um, if there's any other comments, Commissioner Woods?
I think the likelihood of that happening is probably rare, but nonetheless, I take your point. It could happen, right? If it's by right, then I, I don't, I don't know how you add an accessory apartment to an eight-hundred-square-foot home. I just don't know how you, how you get a kitchen.
an eight-hundred-square-foot home, I just don't know how you, how you get a kitchen and a bedroom.
Well, everybody has, everybody has enough room in their backyard, as long as they meet the setbacks, they could put a, a twenty-by-twenty shed up and, and have one room and a bathroom and have a detached place.
Well, you can design your regulations, you know, you can design coverage requirements and certain setbacks and things. The, the idea of Public Act is that you cannot mandate anything more, more constrictive for the accessory dwelling unit than you do for the single-family house. So whatever the rule is for the single-family home, it has to be the same rule for the accessory dwelling unit. So if you have setbacks, certain setbacks for the, the house, those are the same setbacks for the, the unit as well. You can't demand excessive parking, you can't, you can't mandate whether it's attached or detached, you can't mandate whether it has like a, a adjoining door or, you know, there, there are certain rules, but you, you can create certain zoning regulations.
You know, I, I think you're right, Commissioner Woods, I mean, it might not happen all at once, but, but by right, anytime it could happen on the street and I'm surprised that there's more public not out here, especially from the Culver Street people, because they were all very concerned about affecting the person, their, their single-family homes. And so I'm just, I'm shocked that nobody else has come out here, there's, they were, they were thinking that it could change the schools, it could impact the town tremendously, the too many apartments, well, just imagine how, how this could affect the town, so. Commissioner Woods?
I would agree with you, I mean, the potential could be catastrophic as far as I'm concerned. I, I just don't know how it works with not only small homes, but on small lots, you take the whole north end of town, you know, the lots are R-12s or, and, and some of them aren't even R-12s, I believe there's R-7s too, don't we? So, so, yeah, it's just, yeah, while I think it's very well intentioned, in a perfect world, it all works out, yet we don't live in that perfect world and, you know, maybe we could do something down the road. What, what I'm curious, Renata, is if we, let's say we opt out, the council buys into that, has a public hearing and agrees with us, is there a period of time where we do need to go back and look at this, you know, will this, or if, once we opt out, the state's fine with that?
Yeah.
Once we opt out, we have our own regulations, there is nothing in the state statutes right now that says that this opt-out is tied to any kind of penalty or anything. That may change in the future, there may be a different law that forces us to do something, I'm not sure what's gonna happen, but essentially the rule is either we default to the state rule or we have our own rule. In order to have our own rule, we have to effectively opt out of state rules, state that on the record, you have to establish like what you do that state on the record, the reasons for the opt-out, go to council, go through the same process and do that by December thirty-one of this year.
My last question, do you know, is there a trend yet, what other communities are doing? I'm assuming most communities are opting out.
So many communities have actually just not done anything, in particular, smaller rural communities haven't done anything and that's possibly because some of the towns, such as, for example, Coventry, Bolton, places like that, they have larger lot sizes. So, you know, if you have a town where you have lots that are minimum two-acre lots, then, you know, you can have these kind of things. There are a number of towns that actually have done exactly what we are trying to do, clean their existing regulations, remove some of the provisions for special permits, make it better, make it more affordable for people, more accessible to people, fix it a little bit, but opt out because there are some things that they did not like in the Public Act, which is what I would like to see with our regulations. I would like to see our regulation better, but maybe, maybe still our regulation.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Renata, there's nothing currently in the regulations that says that you cannot have an accessory apartment, meaning they're allowed via permit in a residential area, that's correct.
By special exception.
And, and the accessory apartment just can't exceed, I'm trying to think of the way I wanna phrase the question, there's no wording that, that says that you absolutely cannot have an accessory apartment, there's no language, you, you just need to have certain minimums.
So in our current zoning regulations, there are requirements, first of all, the accessory apartment has to be attached, then there are certain language things about the doors that do not meet state criteria, we do require special permits, that is also not allowed by Public Act. And then we have some language in there with regards to extending special permits, so we require people to like register and then extend it. There, there are other provisions that are also not in compliance with the, the state statutes. So we can, if the commission wants, we can keep our regulation, but in my opinion, it's not really a very good regulation. And, and the reason for that is if you don't have people applying to have that use, that probably means that something's wrong with your regulation. Like if in two years, nobody came in and said, may I apply for accessory apartment in this housing conditions, when like we really are under pressure with like affordable housing, that means something's not right with our act.
But I mean, there is at least a pathway laid out for everybody who has a residential property to at least have the ability.
Well, it should be reviewed, it's probably not.
Well, it definitely apply to R-12 and R-20, not all residential zones.
R-7? So if you live in an R-7 property, you cannot have an accessory apartment? Correct?
Correct.
Is an R-7 two families?
A lot of them are, yes. There are, there are, there, there, there are provisions for duplexes, but, you know, they're like on ten acres and stuff, so, you know, nothing left in Newington is gonna hit that target these days.
All right, do we have a motion? Yes, Commissioner Woods?
Move to opt, move to opt to town of Newington out of the mandatory standard of procedures identified in Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine related to the regulation and approvals of accessory dwelling units. Findings, while the Town Planning and Zoning Commission has carefully considered the criteria listed within section six of Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine, defines that additional review and approval criteria beyond those afforded within the Public Act are necessary to ensure that development patterns consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development are.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Woods, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Hagerty. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it's six one, motion passes to opt out and send it to the town council. All right, thank you, and our next petition, Commissioner Claffey, if you could read it, petition twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Motion to approve petition twenty.
No, just to read the motion, so for discussion.
Oh, for discussion.
It's up on the, it's up here.
Oh, why? Addition twenty-three dash twenty-two, special permit, see section six point one six, to allow a hybrid retail location for adult-use cannabis sales at two-nine-oh-three Berlin Turnpike, applicant Verano, owner GLM one-eight-six-seven Realty LLC, Newington Realty Inc., contact Rain Theobald.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. So this applicant complies with all the setbacks and separations, I believe, they comply with all the separations, the setbacks, it's an existing building that's there. I don't believe that, at least in my opinion, we're gonna have the same experience as the Krispy Kreme, I don't believe that's gonna happen. If there is, if there is a, a large draw to it in the beginning, they're gonna take care of it with the necessary traffic to, off-duty police or police, so I, I have confidence in that. I'll open it up to commissioners for discussion. Commissioner Tristan?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this, I tend to agree with what the applicant said regarding traffic, I think if the novelty statewide will probably have been worn off to some extent by the time their dispensary opens and I really appreciate the, the social equity aspect of it, I appreciate what you had to say, Danny, in regards to the disproportionate impact of the drug war and how these dispensaries and legalization sort of rights those historical wrongs, so I'm all in favor.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else, any other commissioners like to speak on this? Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Tristan that this is a good use of, of the property and I think the property needs to be reused again, it sat vacant for too long and while it does a butt residential neighborhood, I think what happens if it sits for much longer, that a restaurant's probably going in there and if a restaurant goes in, it's gonna probably be looking for a drive-through window and that would probably be the worst thing in the world for anybody in property owners as far as I'm concerned, that noise just carries forever. So again, I think it's a good use, I, I think we're, we're here, it's, we, we, we've amended our regulations to allow this use and I'm happy to see this come to the town.
Very good, Commissioner Woods, thank you. Any other commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Make a motion to approve addition twenty-three dash twenty-two, special permit, section six point one six, to allow hybrid retail location for adult-use cannabis sales at two-nine-oh-three Berlin Turnpike, applicant Verano, owner GLM eighteen-six-seven Realty LLC, Newington Realty Inc., contact Rain Theobald, subject to the ten conditions listed in a memo from M.D. Demoto dated May second, two thousand and twenty-two. This approval is granted subject to the conformance with reference plans as may be followed, excuse me, as may be modified by the commission and this approval and the following conditions slash modifications. Reference plans, one, traffic impact study prepared by KWH Enterprises LLC dated zero three twenty-two, pages one through fifty-four inclusive, two, application narrative prepared by Verano, pages one through twenty-four inclusive, number three, site plan prepared by Langen Engineering dated six four two thousand and twelve. Findings, the application satisfies the criteria of section six point one six, five point two and five point three of the zoning regulations.
Very good, thank you, Vice Chairman Claffey, we have a motion on the table, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Trister. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed?
Congratulations.
Congratulations unanimously, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, very good, we're moving right along, we have a time. Twelve o'clock, we're doing good. Next thing is petition twenty-two dash twenty-two, re-subdivision at one-oh-five Cedarwood Lane, applicant Cynthia Ziegler, owner estate of Francis C. Callahan, AKA Francis Callahan and Cynthia Callahan, contact Alan Bonjovani. So we'll take these up individually and this is pretty simple, I think it's a nice lot up there, I don't have any problems with this, do any commissioners have any, we're gonna, yeah, vote on them separate?
We need to do them in a special order, does it matter, do we need to do twenty-two, twenty-two?
I would do C first, please.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, we read the twenty-two, twenty-two, I, I apologize if Commissioner could read the, I'll, I'll read it. C is petition twenty-one dash twenty-two, special permit, section three point four point nine, to allow an interior lot at one-oh-five Cedarwood Lane, applicant Cynthia Ziegler, owner estate of Francis C. Callahan, AKA Francis Callahan and Cynthia Callahan, contact Alan Bonjovani. So petition twenty-one dash twenty-two, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve petition twenty-one dash twenty-two, special permit, section three point four point nine, to allow an interior lot at one-oh-five Cedarwood Lane, applicant Cynthia Ziegler, owner estate of Francis C. Callahan, AKA Francis Callahan and Cynthia Callahan, contact Alan Bonjovani, subject to the eight conditions listed in a memo from Mike Demoto dated May seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two. This approval is granted subject to the conformance with reference plans as may be modified by the commission in this approval and the following conditions modifications. Reference plans, one, re-subdivision plan, sheets one through three, prepared by BGI, dated two twenty-five twenty-two and revised five eighteen twenty-two. Findings, the application and revised plans dated five eighteen twenty-two meet the special permit criteria of section five point two and the interior lot criteria of section three point four point nine of the Newington zoning regulations.
Very good, motion made by Commissioner Hagerty, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Havens, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next petition is petition twenty-two dash twenty-two, re-subdivision at one-oh-five Cedarwood Lane, applicant Cynthia Ziegler, owner estate of Francis C. Callahan, AKA Francis Callahan and Cynthia Callahan, contact Alan Bonjovani. And Renata, this is concerning the sidewalk waiver or?
There, there is a sidewalk waiver motion in there, yes.
Yep. We have that. If there's no questions and no objections, I'll entertain a motion from a commissioner on petition twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve petition twenty-two dash twenty-two, re-subdivision at one-oh-five Cedarwood Lane, applicant Cynthia Ziegler, owner estate of Francis C. Callahan, AKA Francis Callahan and Cynthia Callahan, contact Alan Bonjovani, subject to the eight conditions listed in a memo from M.D. Demoto, M. Demoto, excuse me, dated May seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two. This approval is granted subject to the conformance with reference plans as may be modified by the commission in this approval and the following conditions modifications. Reference plans, one, re-subdivision plan, sheets one through three, prepared by BGI, dated two twenty-five twenty-two and revised five eighteen twenty-two. Finding, this application and revised plans dated five eighteen twenty-two are in compliance with the design standards of section three of the Newington subdivision regulations.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Hagerty, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Havens. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then we have sidewalk motion to grant waiver to section three point one one for sidewalk installation. Petition twenty-two dash twenty-two, re-subdivision at one-oh-five Cedarwood Lane, applicant Cynthia Ziegler, owner estate of Francis C. Callahan, AKA Francis Callahan and Cynthia Callahan, contact Alan Bonjovani in accordance with section four of the subdivision regulations. Finding, the issuance of this waiver meets conditions A through E of section four of the subdivision regulations. I'll entertain that as a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Havens. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Commissioner Woods, if you could take care of petition twenty-five dash twenty-two, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, petition twenty-five dash twenty-two, special permit, section three point four point seven, for conversion of an older home into a multiple-dwelling home at forty-four East Cedar Street, applicant owner Robert J. Santier.
Want to go ahead and share?
I'll move to approve special permit twenty-five dash twenty-two, special permit, section three point four point seven, for conversion of an older home into a multi, multiple-dwelling home at forty-four East Cedar Street, applicant owner Robert J. Santier, subject to the two findings and one condition.
findings and one condition listed in a memo from M.D. Damato, last revised oh-five, nineteen twenty-two. This approval is granted subject to the conformance with reference plans, as may be modified by the commission and this approval, and the following conditions modifications. Findings, one, issuance of this approval will support the goals established by the Newington POCD by encouraging a diverse housing stock and continued investment in residential properties. Two, property contains a detached structure built prior to, to the adopting of zoning regulations, which includes a single pre-existing non-conforming dwelling unit. Conditions, one, prior to the occupancy of any units, five parking spaces shall be striped or designated within the driveway parking area and shall be continually maintained.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Woods, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Havens. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously, congratulations, good luck. Okay. We have a few things under petitions for public hearing scheduling, nothing special, I don't think. We'll go right into, from there, we'll go right into a town planner's report, go right ahead, Renata.
Let me just really quickly share my future agenda, because that's really the only thing I want to show. So coming up on June eighth, you will have Okay, so Eric has a zoning board of appeals application, a small setback, setback variance application, then on your agenda coming up, you will have, where do I, this, there you go, you will have the, the two fireworks sales that you just received just now, and the freestanding sign on a gas station on Main Street. Conservation Commission is going to vote on Church Street, which they still haven't done that, on the Church Street subdivision. Sixty-five homes have submitted an application for site plan modification for the parking lot, parking lot modification, and that's what we have so far.
That deals yours for answers to that?
So we will now go with the opt-out to the council, I had to talk to James, they think the way it works, it goes on their schedule and it gets accepted first, and then it gets scheduled, and then once it goes through their process, through the opt-out, we're going to resume with you the talks about the actual regulation amendment, so.
We have plenty of time for the regulation, actually.
We have any time we want.
Yep.
It doesn't matter, we have, we have functioning regulations, so we, like, the, the deadline that matters is the opt-out deadline, so that's the one that I really want to take care of, preferably before I go on vacation, in August. So, so that's, that's my sort of like a deadline for me.
Anything else?
No, so that's, that's really it.
Anything under communications?
No.
Okay, everybody's got the CROG, does anybody have any less questions concerning the CROG documents?
Yeah, I had one, and the, the first one there, Southfield is doing re, or, yeah, retail cannabis in residential zones.
So a number of communities had these moratoriums on cannabis, and these moratoriums are now coming to an end, so I think what, what's happening here is there, they had the moratorium that came to an end and they're doing the amendment, and apparently they're doing, I, I don't think this is a residential zone. This is like some kind of zone, but this, I doubt that this is a residential zone.
Yeah, that, that R forty-five might be something else in that town, it doesn't necessarily, could mean retail.
Anything else? Okay, we have public participation, anybody from the public wishing to speak? Is there anybody on Zoom that has their hand up?
Go ahead, Rose. Hi, it's Rose Lyons, forty-six Elton Drive. I'm pleased to see that you opted out on the accessory dwelling units. I hope that when it goes to the town council, that this is put out to the public more than it has been in front of TPZ. As for Culver Street neighborhood not showing up, nobody else showed up either, and I think unless it's in their backyard, wherever it may be, people tend not to show up. I can only imagine that there's a handful of people on Zoom watching this meeting right now. So like I say, I hope that when it goes to the town council, that other people will be paying attention and speak up either for or against, whatever the case may be. I was just trying to think back, Bonefish, and this has nothing to do with the marijuana dispensary, but I think that Bonefish was vacant for a long time because they wouldn't give up the lease, they wanted certain type of a restaurant in there, but that being said, I'm glad to see something's going in there, and last but not least, I keep hearing an old familiar name, Mike Damato, being mentioned tonight, I'm just wondering, is he back in the planning department? If so, welcome back, Mike, you were missed. Thank you, have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Rose, appreciate your comments. Mike Damato is working as a consultant right now for the, for the town of Newington, to pick up, so we can get all our things accomplished, basically. Anybody else on Zoom that has a question or would like to speak? Nobody else? Anybody from the public? If there's no objection, I'll move on to remarks from commissioners. Anybody from the commission have any remarks? All right, closing remarks from me, Renata. What happened? We didn't, we didn't get enough stuff on our agenda here.
You said it was gonna be ten-thirty.
Even ten-thirty. To adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Renata.